All of the basketball events and volleyball events in the Performing Arts Center. So they've got a lot of after-hours events that require conditioning. And then district-wide, year over year, so we're down 20% as a district. So it's really exciting to come into work and most facilities guys probably don't like numbers and metrics and percentages, but I like them, I always have. It just shows we're actually making a difference and we're hitting our accounts and that's the pocketbook. And Dr. Desper, I think you've looked at kind of forward-looking and if we maintain this, it's about $20,000 a year in savings?
Yeah, so I would say, first thing I would say on Mr. Mont being a numbers guy, where maybe some other facilities people are not. Mr. Mont is one of the best facilities people in the state, so I'd just like to say that. To also say what Mr. Mont said, on the numbers-wise, if you take April of '24 versus April of '25, the difference in that monthly cost, you can extrapolate out and it's probably a savings of about $20,000. Now, why Mr. Mont says what he says is very important. We can't control the overall cost of energy if, you know, natural gas prices go up and stuff, so you can't base efficiency just on the cost, but it does look like there will be, you know, monetary savings from it. So it's been a very good deal, for sure.
Thank you. You guys have any questions, any concerns? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's go ahead.
Item seven, consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the August 12, 2025 Board Meeting, 7A, 7B, discussion and possible action to approve the following contracts, agreements for fiscal year '26. A, MOU with North Care. B, K&amp;K Insurance for Camp Classen. C, Reading Eggs for Elementary. D, parchment contract. E, vocabulary renewal for Elementary. F, MOU with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. 7C, discussion and possible action to approve the following out-of-town and out-of-state overnight trips. A, high school band Tulsa, Oklahoma, January 21 through 24, 2026. B, high school band Orlando, Florida, April 16 through 19 of 2026. C, Stuko State, Ponca City, November 1 through 3 of 2025. D, high school choir and orchestra, Branson, Missouri, April 9 through 12 of 2026. E, Camp Classen, Davis, Oklahoma, October 1 through 3 of 2025. 7D, approve the additions of the following activity funds. One, athletic director, 819. Two, high school fund, 923. Three, elementary fund, 913. Four, partners in education, 976. And then 7E is approve the financial fund reports.
So on the financials, starting with the activity fund, we have the sheet that's kind of a combination of a balance sheet and an income statement. I would say behind that, there are the balances of the individual activity fund accounts. None of those are negative, which is, you know, important. We don't want activities to be running in the red. Overall, what I would say is, you can see a lot of activity for August, just like there was a lot of activity in July. There's a lot of revenue coming in and there are a lot of expenses going out as fundraisers are going and also, you know, some of the bigger, more costly sports are starting up. What I would say is, it's actually not, if you look at the beginning balance and the ending, that's a difference of about, you know, $130,000. That's not more than last year. I always try to look at the past to just kind of compare. Last year, it was actually closer to 200, so that's not out of the ordinary for it to drop that much. It starts picking up more in later fall and spring and getting back to where it started. That's what we hope, that's what it's done in the past. So just a little history on what typically happens there. Moving on to the function summary report. So this is basically, and we're getting to the point, I think next board meeting we'll do the budget book and just discuss that. The function summary, the first page is the general fund and that appropriated number is kind of a placeholder for what our budget might be. I think it might end up being a little higher once all said and done. You'll notice that we have more than a couple months' worth of encumbrances. If you took two divided by 12 and took the percentage, we have way more encumbrances than that percentage would be. That's normal. A lot of the encumbrances are opened upfront, just because we know what a lot of the costs are going to be. The number on encumbered will actually be a lot bigger next month when we finally have payroll completely encumbered. So we actually did contract signing today and tomorrow. So once that's done, we'll have it encumbered and that'll also make it a lot easier. Didn't want to do the budget book until we have a really good number for that. It's kind of predictable, but want to see what we actually put in the system before we finalize it. On the revenue collection sheet, there's nothing that I would say is way out of the ordinary. Our last board meeting on the collection sheet, the big amount from foundation and incentive aid from the state, I think we had received it the day of the board meeting, so it wasn't on the tracking sheet, but we'd actually gotten it that day. So that's our big, typically a million dollars a month. Everything else is pretty standard. We're collecting a little bit of ad valorem, but most of that comes later on in the year. And then, one thing I would just note, we collected down, it's in state, 3436 School Resource Officer, we collected $93,000. I'd already put 92 last board meeting before we collected it, so we collected a little more. That is, this should be the last year of that, so that's something that's just, you know, we have to keep track of revenue that we won't have in the future, so that if we wait until we find out next August and July, we could be in trouble. So that's something that we won't have next year and we have something to be aware of.
And that was part of that three-year plan that they had? There is some talks of maybe extending that because they've been so happy with how it's gone, but we won't know that.
Yeah, it would be great if they did. I'm not a pessimist, I promise, but I like to assume we're not going to get it because that way you can hopefully be sure you're not in a worse position. But hopefully, yeah, hopefully they do redo it. Any questions on the financials?
So on the federal funds, when do those start coming in?
They really don't start coming in until, really, the spring is when you start claiming them. There's a few claims, kind of, last year we started claiming a little bit in December, I think. Now, we did receive, in July, you receive some final claims, you'll see-
From the prior year?
From prior year, so you do get those in July, but you really don't start claiming a lot until really late winter into spring, so.
Any other questions on 7B or 7C?
7C, that, I was a little confused, the high school choir and orchestra, but most of the paperwork only says choir.
No, my fault. It's high school choir and orchestra, yeah.
It doesn't talk about the orchestra doing anything.
I think it's because Ms. Beal submitted it, so.
Oh, okay. But it's a joint performance?
It is.
Or is it two separate, but at the same place?
It's, they're at the same place, it's the same trip, from what the paperwork states.
Yeah, I just didn't know if the orchestra was playing, what the choir's performing, or-
I don't think they have exact details yet. I don't know, I don't have the flow yet.
I was more curious than-
All I have is that they're going-
Because this is the first time I remember those two going together.
It's the first time for this trip.
Yeah. Kind of cool. Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Rule call vote?
Palmer?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Pettit?
Jagger.
Yes.
Yes.
Item eight, approve the general non, or general fund non-payroll encumbrances for fiscal year '26, numbers 220 through 285, for $185,255.33. Fiscal year '26 change orders for general fund, $11,741.61. The general fund payroll, number 70,000 through 70,337, for $4,251,745.76. And the fiscal year '26 building fund non-payroll, number 12, for $24,691.90.
So I'd like to go ahead and, on some of the larger ones, point out what they are, just because I think there will be questions and it's good just to go ahead and talk about them. The largest one is from American Bus Sales. It's, if you're looking at the PO number, it's PO 271. Mrs. Williams, Heather Williams, you know, she runs all the special services and they really needed a bus that was, that you didn't require a CDL. And also, I believe, and Mr. Mont was a little involved in finding this, I believe it has a lift for wheelchairs and stuff, so it's kind of a, it's not your typical bus, it's more of a bus that's going to help out with special services. It's also paid through IDEA funds, Project 621, so those are federal funds. It's not out of our state aid, because it is specifically for special services. But that's one of the bigger items that I just thought I'd mention. It's to help out, especially, they've had some trouble just getting kids on buses, I think, and also sometimes there aren't always a bus available, maybe, so they just, that's something they needed, that they've been wanting for a long time. And Mr. Mont was able to find one. It's really hard to find those, because they get swooped up as quick as, as quick as one's available. Some other ones that are larger is, you'll see PO 283 to Simonize Sports Field Services for 6,700, that's baseball field seating. The district has, and it's just baseball field, the district has, you know, always in the past helped out with football soccer field and baseball field seating, and so that's just something that we're helping out with, again, on that. Right underneath it, there's number 284, it says Sean and Marie Perry, we're not just paying a random individual on that, for $9,000. That is Project 541, it's federal Title II funds that you can use on professional development. And so, and Dr. Bellis can maybe tell you more about what she's going to teach on, but you, we're basically having her come in for a couple days, like one in the fall and one in the spring, and she's just going to work on some things with, I believe all the teachers will be able to go to it.
Yeah, so, you know, we've had a focus this year for learning and instruction and it has been great. The principals and teachers have done a great job. The conversations I've gone into have just looked different this year, in a great way. So really proud of the principals for leading that initiative, really proud of the teachers for, you know, just taking it and really engaging those conversations. So one of the things we have not done very often is have somebody come in and speak to our whole district together. Usually, it's really, really expensive. We happen to know about this person and the price for bringing a speaker in is very reasonable. This is a full day that we will do in the Performing Arts Center with the whole district, so all staff, on our first PD day in September, and then when we come back in January, she's going to split secondary and elementary, half-day with elementary specific to their level, and then half-day with secondary. And so we're really excited about everyone hearing that. What she'll be talking about is tier one and intervention. So what, tier one is basically what happens in the classroom and how teachers can work with students at the classroom level outside of pulling kids out and, which would be tier two, tier three, and just having a conversation with teachers, talking about those things, which has been a huge focus for us as we've gone. And so we feel like bringing her in with her expertise will be great for them to hear just new perspective and begin some conversations that we'll be able to follow up on. So really excited about her and her being able to come. Again, we know about her a little bit, so we know good things about her. It's not just kind of a shot in the dark, so we're really excited about being able to do this.
The last one I think I would just especially mention is, there's one PO in the building fund, PO 12, for $24,691.90. Our scoreboard took some damage in July from that. We had a pretty windy night and it just can't be repaired, so that's a PO to replace the scoreboard.
Our deductible is way more than that, so-
It's $50,000.
Insurance wasn't going to be a-
Yeah.
And so the wind blew it down?
Yeah, when we had a rainstorm one day, we come the next day and the scoreboard's just kind of folded. Still that way now.
Is this out at the football field?
I actually think that was my second day on the job.
Yeah.
Middle school track.
Okay. Well, we're fixing everything else.
That's right, it'll match the rest of it.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
Any questions on, any ones that you guys were wondering about?
I make a motion to approve the encumbrances as presented.
Second.
Rule call vote?
Palmer?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Jagger?
Yes.
Item nine, estimate of needs. 9A, presentation of the 2025-2026 estimate of needs. And 9B, discussion and possible action on the 2025-2026 estimate of needs.
Okay, so I've given you guys each a copy of the publication sheet. The larger document is, you know, on the board meeting. Really, the main thing is the first page. And really, overall, what the estimate of needs does is, we send it to the county excise board, we also have to send it to the state. But you send it to the county excise board and it gives them the number, the max amount that you can spend in a year. And I would say we don't, we don't want to spend the max amount because we would have no carryover and we would be, that would put us in a bad financial condition. This is just, you know, when we send it, if they approve it, this will be the amount we're approved for. You don't want it to be too small, because there's also a carryover penalty if you don't spend enough money. So it's kind of, you're estimating your revenue and kind of trying to find that sweet spot. But I'd like to just talk about, kind of break down what this sheet is. So up at the very top, the first rectangle that says Statement of Financial Condition, that's really a government or not-for-profit term for a balance sheet, is what that is. And so the first one where it says general fund, it says cash balance as of June 30, 2025, this has given us a snapshot of where we were at on June 30, 2025. That's, that $7 million amount is the amount of cash we had on hand, and then underneath it, we had about 2.7 million left to spend. And that's, that's stuff that we, you can have POs open from FY '25, you have to spend it by the end of December. And so right below that, you'll have the $4,321,000 number. That's the amount we carried over into FY '26. Over to the right, the building fund is the exact same. It's a snapshot of where we're at on June 30. It has our cash and then the reserves from Schedule VII are the amount that, you know, we still have to spend from POs in FY '25, and our carryover is $1,042,000. So that's just kind of where we were, it's a snapshot of where we were at the end of June. So moving down over to the left, this is really probably the biggest part of the estimate of needs. You'll see current expense of $20,937,000. That's the amount we're sending to the excise board, you know, asking, can we spend up to this amount? We're not planning on spending anywhere near that, but that's just kind of, kind of the amount that you're getting approved for. Down below that, you'll see an estimated miscellaneous revenue. This will be very close to the tracking sheet we do every board meeting, the different, these are the different revenue amounts. The 2000s are, you know, local and county, 3000s are state, 4000s are federal. And if you combine that bottom-line number with your $4 million carryover and your $800,000 raised from ad valorem, that's where you're getting that $20,930, uh, $20,930, $20,000. We're going to have to spend more than that. $20,937,000. So that's really the main part of it. They do, they do a smaller version of that for the building fund down at the bottom, right hand. It's showing, you know, $1,008, that's the max amount you could spend if it's approved by the county excise board, and that's coming from our $1,042,000 carryover and then $704,000 of funds raised. Most of that, and ad valorem tax, most of that $704,000 is the Red Bud Funds, that I believe that just started a couple years ago.
Yeah.
Most of the seven, almost all of the $704,000, except maybe $3,000 is Red Bud, and then you've got $114,000 from ad valorem. That's, so you're looking at actual revenue estimated at around $820,000 in the building fund. They also give you a balance sheet for the sinking fund. That's not really money that can be used on anything else except the bonds that are outstanding and that we have to make payments on. So there's, there's really not much to talk about there. And then I would just finish up by saying the rest of the document is mostly past expenses broken down in different ways, like by function and things like that. Any questions? Sorry, I feel like I rampled.
It's good.
No, it's a good explanation.
No, it's a good explanation.
One final thing I would add is, just, we are going to have less revenue, COVID money, and I think I said this last board meeting, but COVID money created a very large carryover. We had a $6 million carryover into last year, and you'll see that, you know, you've seen here that it's four. That's because the prior CFO did a great job. That was the max amount that you could spend. But on that note, I would say our carryover is less. We will probably receive less revenue, because in FY '25, there was a little bit of COVID money, even though it's four years out. So money will be a little bit tighter. I would also say, you never know what's going to happen with the economy. Oklahoma's economy is highly reliant on oil and gas. Right now, it's trading at mid-60s a barrel to make money. They have to, it has to be at $90 to $100 a barrel, so I, I'm, I hope I'm wrong, but the economy may be a little down, just looking at it. I'm not an economist, but you want to kind of have your feelers out there and just be predicting, so it could be that revenue is a little bit down next year, when they kind of make their allocations. And we're also in a period where government efficiency is a thing. You kind of go through these periods. So just things to be aware of, and there may be, money may be a little tighter and there may be some more no's. I don't like telling people no, but that's, that may be what we have to do to make sure we're in a good financial condition. That's, I think, the last thing I would say.
And we have been relaying, you know, to staff, just, we're in a, we're in a season of saving. We've done a lot of facility improvements and they've all been great and needed, but, you know, it's easy to, when you get yeses, it's easy to keep asking. And we've shared that we're, at least for now, we're in a period of wait, see, but with that, saving. And so our first thought is, maybe not, but we'll check, but, because we want to save and make sure we're in a good place depending on how the COVID is, so.
You got to read 9B.
Oh, I already read it, I can read it again.
You did? Thought you read 9A. All right, motion to approve the '25-26 estimate.
Second.
Rule call vote?
Palmer?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Jagger?
Yes. Item 10, discussion and possible action on adult meal prices per USDA requirements for the '25-26 school year.
So you see here, there is a little bit of an adjustment there on the adult prices. Again, this is just a recommendation from USDA, so we follow that recommendation. If you do have any questions, we have a representative from Sidexo here to help with that, but we just got to take their recommendation.
This is something that is kind of set and we typically vote on it every year. The thing I would add to Dr. Bellis is, if it's less than that amount, the general fund has to make up the difference on the meals, so. And Mrs. Elliott, do you want to add anything?
No, if you have any questions, I can answer.
Do we serve a lot of adult meals? I thought we served kid meals.
We do, yes. We don't serve a lot of adult meals, we serve some.
Yeah.
Mainly on holidays like Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Oh, when parents come in, put the meals or whatnot.
And that would include teachers as well?
Correct, that would include your teachers as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
The breakfast was a pretty big jump compared to usual, because they started this year that if you are severe need breakfast, you have to do it by a different number than what they did in the past, and so that is why there is a 60 cent, 40, I can't remember.
It's 55 cents.
55 cent jump on that one, because Bethany is severe need breakfast.
My understanding of it, and Mrs. Elliott, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, you know, we get so much for child nutrition every year, and so I believe it's the USDA set these prices, and if you're, they want to make sure you're not using child nutrition on adults, and so if you don't meet these prices, that's why you have to make up the difference.
Motion to approve the adult meal prices for the '25-26 school year.
Second.
Rule call vote?
Palmer?
Yes.
Nate?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Jagger?
Yes. Item 11, discussion and possible action to approve the revisions to the following board policies, FEG, FNC, DO-R, DEC-R7, DBCA, FFG, DO, DABB, and FFACA.
All right, so I'll go through this a little bit, and if you have any specific questions, let me know. These are all policies that are recommendations from OSSBA based on law changes that either have gone into effect or a lot of these will actually go into effect after November 1st. So I'll summarize these and what they say, generally speaking. So FEG has to do with military transfers and students specifically that have IEPs and the acceptance of those types of transfers, if they're on IEP and military transfers. That language is just language OSSBA has given us. FNC, there was a law talking about antisemitism, and so there's a couple policies here. DO is actually also at, oh, sorry, not at DO, there's some language added to DBCA that's also referenced there. Those, both those things are related to that law. DO-R is a new law that talks about being able to terminate a teacher for failure to report abuse cases, and so that's just adding some language there that allows that to happen. We have talked to our staff about that and let them know the- We have talked to our staff about that and let them know the, their responsibility in reporting individually and, and how that relates to their employment as well, so that's been communicated to them. DEC dash R seven is changes to maternity leave that was, an additional time was given. If they have sick leave, they can take longer, if they wanna use their sick leave longer than the six weeks. And so that just changes language in our policy to allow that. FFG also has to do with reporting child abuse. And that just states that we will have teachers sign to acknowledge that they've been told that this is something they have to do and have received that information. DO is termination of employment, added some language there about abuse reporting as well. FFACA, there were some new options for administering EpiPens and training required for teachers and staff related to EpiPen. So that is now in that language as well. There were, there were some optional languages that we actually talked through last year about administering EpiPens. One part of that is something we've already done historically and always have done and will do, which is if we use an EpiPen on a student, we will call 911 and we will contact the parent. That seems like something you would do anyways, but that, that is now a requirement. And then DABB, you'll see there's a, a little line that is added on the end of a couple of different paragraphs there. And that is talking about legislation in which if there is somebody suspected of an allegation of inappropriate behavior with a student, that that will be communicated as well as any work history with their term. So you can't just allow them to resign and not report that there was an allegation or a situation involving an inappropriate situation with a student, so. So those are the policies, again, just all typical additions based on law changes. But if you have any questions about anything specifically, I'd be happy to let you know.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to board policies. FEG, FNC, DO R, DEC R seven, DBCA, FFG, DO, DABB, FFACA.
Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item twelve, discussion and possible action to approve the cardiac arrest emergency action plan for the 25, 26 school year.
So this plan is also based on law. We actually had this plan in place last year. This plan that you're reading is the same plan with the additional changes of staff who have changed or just a, you'll see some different names there if, if somebody swapped a position. It mentions rave panic button systems, so any updates that we needed to switch are there. But the plan itself is pretty much the same, which is still a good plan and what is also required by law to have, so. Appreciate Mr. Chafee working on this with the nurses to update it and make sure that we got it in our, in our policy to approve.
Motion to approve cardiac arrest emergency action plans for the 25, 26 school year.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action on the District's 25, 26 All School Musical Rogers and Hammerstein's Cinderella.
So again, just talking to the Fine Arts Program, just of options and had great discussion. And, you know, our, our goal is always to have a production that both allows students from all different schools to participate, but also is something that we would feel comfortable with students at all ages coming to watch and observe. And they'll like Cinderella, the story of Cinderella is a good one for that, so.
Motion to approve Roger and Hammerstein's Cinderella for the 25, 26 All School Musical. Second.
Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item fourteen, discussion and possible action to approve the district's capacity of students in each grade at each school as presented.
So each quarter, we have to update our capacity limits. And what you will notice here is that our capacity is, we are at capacity and we have zero room for transfers. This would be a place that if we felt like we needed to add students, we would set that capacity higher and then that would free up space for more transfers. I will tell you that our numbers are high, higher than, if you look at our capacities and what we set, they're well above that. We're still comfortable, but we would prefer them to be lower. But we do know that we had a lot of people move in when they didn't get transfers. So there were a lot more people who enrolled after transfer season was done than was expected. And so, again, the goal is to, to keep numbers at a comfortable level. And I would be honest in telling you, this doesn't reflect that because our numbers are right where they were, you know, three, four years ago. So we still have some work to do to manage those numbers at the lower levels so that when they get to high school and we have an influx of students, they're also manageable. So we still have some work to do. We'll continue to set our capacities where we, where we need to, but. And we're also doing a lot of work in making sure that the people who have identified residency here are, are truly living in our district. And that's a, a tall task, but we're, we're making sure we're diligent with that.
Make a motion to approve the district's capacity of students in each grade at each school site as presented.
Second. Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Just, item fifteen, discussion and possible action on the addition of an adjunct teaching position with a certification in the area of dance for teaching POM, requiring board approval from OSDE for certification in dance.
So a really quick explanation here, we do have an hour in our day that is POM. And the teacher, Ms. Peralta, is not certified in dance, so for her to teach that class, we have to adjunct her. So she does a great job, not concerned about anything with it. This is just an accreditation thing that we have to do for her to teach that class.
Motion to approve the addition of an adjunct teaching position with certification in the area of dance for teaching POM, requiring board approval from OSDE for certification in dance.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item sixteen, staff reports.
Ms. Williams is out today unfortunately, but we would like to have some of our principals share with us some information on their staff report. So Ms. Chavez, you wanna start us off?
Do I need to stand?
Please do, yes.
All right, so on the board report, I wanted to talk about a lot more than one, but I will just go ahead and talk about the elementary playground addition. So last year, our PTO worked really hard and our families and the community worked really hard to raise funds so that we can make some updates to the elementary playground. In recent years, we've done things like supporting, helping get an additional big toy at the ECC. We've also supported in getting turf. I know that's been a partnership with the school budget as well, not just our PTO funds. But last year, we focused on getting more equipment. And so what we did was moved the Gaga pit that was traditionally right near like the administration office.
So I don't know what a Gaga pit is.
A Gaga pit is that dog. Is it like, is it an octagon? I think it's an octagon, how they counted the sides, but there are ten students at a time and they play a game. And it was actually donated by a family within our district.
Okay.
And it is a hot topic play, but it left just some visibility concerns and it is a very intense game and it needs a lot of monitoring. So we went ahead and relocated that and got some different surfacing for it so that way it can be safe and not just like our laptop. And so that has been relocated to where one of the basketball courts was. So now we have Gaga pit, basketball and soccer, and then we still have wall wall. And so we kind of have more of that competitive play on the blacktop area. And then on where the turf is, we had instruments installed, some of which were donated by Platinum Playgrounds, who helped with the ECC additions and who also were part of this project as well. Then we have two spinning objects, so one is an egg spinner and the other, I have no clue what the name is, but they love it. And then we have the biggest thing that you can see, it's called the bird's nest. And it is various ropes with different platforms at different heights that the kids are loving. And the goal was that our broad range, you know, we have first through fifth grade, finding toys that would be able to excite and engage the various abilities while still making it safe. And I will tell you, across the grades, it has been a major hit. And we're just so excited because I know that's also impacting positive play. It's giving them more options and really helping with some of those social interactions because we're allowing more things. And so we're looking at phase two for this year's fundraiser, how we can continue and just do a little bit more of finding. But it's been a really great experience so far, so I'll limit it to that one, but I've lost some chairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in the middle school, probably our most exciting thing recently is Bronco games. It's a time that the kids get to come in and just see teachers, staff in a different light, not in the classroom setting. So we take a day for each grade level, so we start with eighth grade, then seventh and sixth, and we go down to the high school gym and we play for two hours. So we do volleyball and we do, we have big Connect Four games that the kids do relay races that way and chariot races. And then we do tug of war and just loud music playing, kids having fun. And we used to have it later on in the year, but we found that it was such a great way to build relationships and the kids to, you know, kind of see their classmates a little differently and cheer for each other. And so we, we had it earlier this year and it was really, it was really a great thing. And so the kids cheer each other on and it was just, it was a fun, positive experience. And then it's an exhausting three days for all of us that are running the whole thing, but it's worth it in the end. So sixth graders actually went to their teachers and said, we need to practice our Connect Four relay so for next week when we do this. And they're like, oh, we don't do this. So, but it's just a fun way for kids to, to get to see all of us in a different way and us to have fun with them.
That's great.
All right, hot school.
Yeah, I, I was just confirming with Ms. Tovar about the amount of money and Coach Forster as well has been helping with this. We, one thing that we've done at the high school is we started an aviation program three years ago and Dan Allen has kind of taken it with Coach Forster as kind of a backup for grant funding for this. And we, we applied for a grant, AOPA grant, and we got over twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the program. And so that money is spent, I got the spreadsheet here, so I'm, I'm not good at math, I'm not a numbers guy, but I'm trying my best here. Simulator, we got another simulator for our kids to fly or to pretend to fly a simulator. That's gonna be about five thousand dollars. We got it with the great money. We have a field trip scheduled for kids to go to Wiley Post, or to, Wiley, no, sorry, not Sundance, Cali, whatever. Wiley Post. Wiley Post. Last year, they got to go upstairs into the observation deck or the tower and they got to see like what was going on. It was cra, I've never been up to one of those. It was really cool to see how quiet it was, how direct, how respectful the kids were, how they got to see everything, really good job. Also, they got a two thousand, almost three thousand dollars for drones as well. And so it's right now, next year moving forward, they gotta decide whether we're gonna go drones or aviation or, or pilots. We're not sure yet, but we have that option. And so, you know, Mr. Allen along with Coach Forster will have that decision to make of where are we gonna go with our program. But just another way that we, we try to save as much money as we can and get a twenty thousand dollar grant for our program. It's really awesome. It's good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Please.
You ready?
Yes.
Well, I'm excited. This is a great day. I mean, I learned what a Gaga pit was. I had no idea. In regards to our activities, athletics, it's, it's already started a, a great week. Let's see, softball played their tournament last weekend and they went three for four, won three out of their four games. They lost to Heartbreaker to Guthrie in the, in the finals on Saturday in ten innings. And it was quite the game. Volleyball, the junior varsity played a tournament actually yesterday at OCS and they won the tournament. Or they won all of their games. I'm not exactly sure how they, if it's a bracket type situation or what. But they won all games, didn't lose a set, won five games. And then the varsity volleyball team won against, beat Christian Heritage, CHA, who, they are three to two and they are the defending three A state champions. So very good deal. And so upcoming, we have a couple of things that are up for Friday night with our football game. Prior to the game, soccer will be receiving their state championship rings, girls soccer, I should say. And they said between six-thirty and six-forty-five. And so we'll be doing that. And then at halftime, we have the Cheer Clinic going on currently. And so they're gonna be doing their performance, but, but as they bring their kids on, I talked to Coach Ross and she wanted to have all her kids out there around. And the band said that they would be out there to play the fight song after, but they are going to receive their rings for stunt state.
Oh, that's good.
So it's, it's a good day. It'll be a good day.
That's good. Thank you.
Item seventeen, proposed executive session.
There are a couple of things there, nothing that, you know, I need to, from my opinion, need to go to executive session board, but it's up to you guys if you have something you would like to discuss.
Do we vote not to convene then? Do we have to do that or? Oh, okay.
Okay. Item eighteen, discussion and possible board action on the employment of personnel in Addendum A for the 25, 26 school year.
I make a motion to approve the employment of personnel in Addendum A for the 25, 26 school year.
Second. Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item nineteen, discussion and possible board action on the resignation of employees in Addendum B as authorized by 25 OS three oh seven B one.
Make a motion to approve the resignations of employees in Addendum B as authorized by 25 OS three oh seven B one. Second.
Roll call vote.
Palmer.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Jaggers.
Yes. Item twenty, information items.
All right, a couple of things we have coming up. September twelfth, we have a football game that will have junior Bronco Cheer Clinic and ring ceremonies for girls soccer and stunt state. On September twentieth, we have a Swazi five K that will be happening within the community. On September twenty-second, we have a professional day. We talked about that a little bit and our plans for that. We're excited for that. Homecoming is September twenty-sixth, Fall Ball is September twenty-seventh, and parent teacher conference night is October fourteenth.
All right, item twenty-one, board member comments. Anybody else?
Well, after twenty-two years essentially, it's time for me to step down, resign and allow somebody who has kids in the school to take my position. And it's been a great time. And I can't say much more, so. But it would be affect, my resignation would be effective September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty.
I just wanna thank Les for all his time and, and, you know, all the knowledge. He has so much institutional knowledge and we're gonna, we're gonna miss that. But, so I thank you for all that.
I agree. Les, thank you very much for all your years of service. And I've learned a lot from you and I don't feel like I'm done, but I know I can call if I have any questions. So thank you for all that you've contributed over the years.
Item twenty-two, and we're not voting on whether or not he can or can't.
You don't get to do that.
Item twenty-two, superintendent report.
Very good, thank you. So first thing I would like to do is congratulate our Hall of Honor recipients this year. There'll be Tina Spear, Sherri Axon, Kevin Robinson, and Kathy Powell. These individuals are a representation of how important teachers, administrators, support staff and alumni are to the success of Bethany Public Schools. It's a great class of diversity and just people with different roles and how they support us. And we will be celebrating with them at a reception on October second and then at the football game on October third. Couple of things I'd like to report in front of the schools that weren't reported about today or may have been in their report but weren't discussed. The first thing I would like to talk about is the, the cell phone policy that we've seen and report to the board, a little bit about that. The change. Uh, the change, uh, in my opinion and a lot of people's opinion that I've spoken to has been very positive. Um, the interaction with students is evident when you, uh, walk through the halls, uh, when you see kids hanging out. Um, much more engagement with each other, which is really, uh, the goal, I think, more than anything. Um, but then we also noticed during a pep assembly, uh, they were fully engaged in the pep assembly. There were some great ideas that they had with how they mixed students within that pep assembly also, which, uh, formed groups that were ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade students together, thought that was brilliant. Um, but more so it was they, they weren't just on their phone, which we had seen in the past had been an issue. I don't know that I realize, I don't know if we realize, that cellphones might have been the issue all along because they just had something else to do in the stands other than engage and, and cheer on the, the pep assembly. So that has been, um, from our, uh, initial thoughts, a great, uh, change this year. And I also wanna commend the students because it is a change for them. Um, we have had some issues with kids, mainly just forgetting. Uh, no one's been disrespectful that I know, or very few have been disrespectful. Um, and really they, as our students typically do, they've just met the expectation and, um, and embraced it for the most part and it has not been a difficult transition for us. And I think middle school, elementary, and middle school's policy has helped with that. Uh, but I've been really proud with the students, um, that they have not, you know, fought this and, and it's really been a great transition. Uh, elementary, we got Camp Classen, uh, coming up, uh, here in just a few weeks, uh, at the beginning of October and, um, again, just a great tradition. Um, not every school takes, uh, a group of, uh, students and teachers and parents and goes and stays three, uh, three days with them. Um, I know that's a, a big commitment for our teaching staff and our parents. Um, we continue to ask for volunteers and, and counselors, uh, to stay in a cabin with, with kids that are not their own for several days and we continue to have more than we could even take volunteers. So, so grateful for, uh, our parents, our teachers, um, and, uh, just the opportunity to carry on that tradition. And then, uh, an interesting one, uh, is, uh, just a culture piece on the middle school. Um, and Ms. Donnelly didn't know I was gonna talk about this, but, so Ms. Donnelly had a birthday on Sunday. And, uh, yep, yep, and so they, uh, had a day where they were going to, PTO got together. They were gonna have donuts for the kids and they told everyone to wear green because green is Ms. Donnelly's favorite color. And no, Ms. Donnelly, we're not changing the school colors to green, but, uh, the participation in that from the staff and the students, I saw a staff picture, um, kids were walking by, happy birthday, Mrs. Donnelly. Um, it, it was, sometimes you just get a feel of, of the culture of a place and that was a day that you could just get a feel of the culture. They, they were happy to celebrate with her. They were happy to celebrate together. The amount of green was crazy, um, because they wanted to show that, that they support her and so just a, a great culture. And not all middle schools have that, i- if we're being honest. It's, it's probably the hardest place to have a dynamic and good culture. Um, and so they've done a great job as a staff and certainly, uh, Ms. Donnelly's done a great job leading that staff in creating a culture at a middle school that where kids want to celebrate with adults. That doesn't happen everywhere. Um, and then finally, I would say, I'd like to thank Mr. Pettit for his twenty-two years of service. Your service has been recognized, um, by your introduction, uh, induction into the Hall of Fame, um, very well deserving. Uh, but also you've led Bethany through building projects, you've led them through challenges, you've led them through, uh, facility improvements. If you look at those twenty-two years that you've been on this board, the amount of things that have been accomplished, not just in the growth of this district, but the accomplishments of this district, um, in, in all that, fine arts, athletics, facilities, academics, um, you've got a lot of things that you could, uh, tip your cap and put a little feather in your cap on that have happened over those years that you have served. Um, and then I would say to add to that, you've served beyond your kids being here. As you mentioned, you're, you're letting someone else step in who has kids, but you've done this for a time without having kids and that just shows your commitment to this place, not just a commitment to your kids. We all have a commitment to our kids. You've shown that you have a commitment beyond your kids to this place, Bethany Public Schools, and we can't thank you enough for that, so thank you so much for your service. That is my report.
Alright, item three, we are adjourned, twenty-three, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.